All right, we have started today's meeting of the Norwich Planning Commission. We have a quorum of four members here on Zoom. We're hoping to get two more in shortly. But let's, do I have a motion for the agenda and then we can discuss?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All right, thank you. Any discussion around the agenda? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. All right. Do we have a public comment for items not on the agenda? I see, I see a couple of members of the public. I would hazard a guess they are related to an item that is on the agenda, but that's simply a guess. Okay. So let's move correspondence. There's one thing in correspondence which relates more to solar sighting. We, I asked Pam to put it in just so the whole planning commission could see it. We, it's Chris Katokey's comments about the new rules 5100 and also just on our conversations about sighting and, and what to do, you know, prime ag and a couple of other things. So it's in our packet, but it's, it's actually more a solar sighting deal. So we, we just put it there for inclusion. I think that's all the correspondence that wasn't directly related to a different agenda item. So we can move through that. I'm earning on the, going to chair updates. I would ask maybe if you could give us a quick update on the Connecticut River. All right, let's see if these boys have managed their IT struggles. I see. Norwich Vermont joining, but yeah, all right, because I know we have the select board in their last packet had a quite extensive, six, seven pages long detailed set of comments around the hydro relicensing. Hi Jeff, can you hear us? Bob, there you go. We can see you.
I guess.
Yeah, we'll hear you. All right. Thank you, Bob. You, I think you got us. Can you see, hear us?
Yeah, can you hear us?
All right, yes. All right, so we, we've started, we approved the agenda. No public comment unless the person in the room there has any public comment for items not on the agenda.
So Jan, is a quick question.
Yes.
Who approved, who approved the agenda?
We have, we have a quorum. We have Vince isn't here, but Mary, Chris and Ernie are here.
Ernie, okay.
Oh, Ernie, we don't see you.
You, yeah.
Yeah, Ernie.
Yeah, yeah, you won't see me in a few more minutes.
Yeah. Ernie's chewing off camera.
I got home late.
Yeah. All right. So where, where we are on the agenda is on the chair updates, Connecticut River Hydro. And I was just saying, Ernie is our rep into that issue. If people saw, there was a long proposed comment that I believe, and Ernie can tell us, I believe the, the group that Ernie's a part of drafted that the select board will take it up tomorrow in their meeting. So I'm, I'm not sure whether the planning commission needs to do anything, but, but Ernie, can you bring us up to date on that?
Sure. Basically, what we did, the, the long document you saw was something of a template sent around by the Connecticut joint, joint Connecticut River Joint Committee. And, and so it, it, it laid out a number of things whether, and, and we could pick and choose to agree with them or whatever. And basically we agreed with the entirety of the document. And what we did, the modifications we made on the document were things that we sort of thought that recommended, represented what would be Norwich's interests emphasizing certain things. Didn't really de-emphasize anything or leave anything out, but for instance, one of the things I dealt with was, or two of them really, because they, they overlapped. Was I, I added more concern about erosion and, and on the, of the banks and, and mitigation of that. That was part of the mitigation expect, mitigating expenses fund, MEF. And and, and it was also part of the other section on recreation, which I was assigned, which basically people, primary use of the, the, the river upstream of the dam is is recreation. The dam, you know, the dam doesn't really serve Vermont in by itself that much. It's, it's purposes really for creating just electricity to add to the, to the overall mix. A lot, you know, that, you know, and being fungible, it doesn't really matter where it goes. But it doesn't necessarily serve Vermont or anything. But more importantly, in any case, is the fact that the primary reuse that people recognize of the river is basically recreational and environmental. And so that was the, the focus that, parts that I put on. Craig was, Craig Ling was involved with mentioning issues having to do with other environmental things, especially with wildlife and fish ladders and, and issues like that. Mitigation. Trying to remember what the E stands for, the mitigation fund. Which was very heavily commented on right in the, in the template. Was there to make sure that as, what we wanted to have see happen was as the, and, and Linwood Anderson was the one doing, or Andrews, Linwood anyways, was, was the one who was writing on that part. And she focused on aside from making sure that there was such a fund, because there's no guarantee that, that the, that the hydro company is going to be held accountable for damage caused by by the river due to the dam.
So Ernie, just a question, because I want to, I want the planning commission to be taking appropriate, you know, being in the right role or understanding our role in this. So there is the, the river council or whatever it is. Then there's the select board. Is, is this something that the planning commission needs to be, should be involved in, or are these other parties the appropriate parties to do it?
I, I think the, the plan, I don't think the planning commission or any of the other town commissions are, are really necessary at this point. And I, and we haven't discussed this, so we just sent it on to the select board. And we had to have it in by tomorrow. No, they had to be in by today, so it could be included in the meeting tomorrow.
Yeah.
So that, that, that's where we, where it kind of stands right now is we don't even know if the town manager is going to have something to say or if it's going to be the select board.
Okay, so, so right now it's really informational for the planning commission. Obviously, any of us can sign into the select board meeting and, and comment on it.
Yes.
That agenda item, but there's no reason for us to take action. That's, that's the way I read it.
No.
Okay. So any, any comments, any statements on that topic from the commission? That, that was the way I read it and I, you know, I, you can go through it and it does go in detail through points that are obviously of concern to us, but I think it's, it's other parties that are appropriate to deal with it and it's being dealt with, so. Okay. Next, thank you, Ernie, for putting the time into that. I know you stepped into that one and it was a short timeframe.
But I definitely stepped into it.
Stepped into something. Okay, on the update on the planning and zoning staff is slogging along pretty much steady as she goes. I had, as requested at the last meeting, I had some conversation with Brennan around the stating to him that there was certainly an element of the planning commission that wanted to wake back up the, or consider again as a ZA only or a change to the job description. He reiterated again that he would prefer a, a real senior professional person who can do, do more and be full time. We had another round, I don't know if people noticed ads, we had another round of applications. There were several applications, none of whom I reviewed them. Brennan reviewed them, none of whom were worth interviewing in that, but the new ones. So that's, that is where that stands. Then the select board approved another extension to Kyle's contract. I think it's another, it's probably another three months. That seems to be the, the times that they do. So right now we are in the same holding pattern we have been in for, and I'm not sure how long, 14 months or something. So that is the current state. Ernie, do you have your hand up?
Well, first of all, I just want to ask, is this a proper time to discuss any of this or?
I'm really doing it as an update. It is on the agenda, so if there, if there are comments, we can take them. I'm not, it, it's not on the agenda to be a decision point. More an update, but certainly we can take comments. Okay.
Hey Jan.
Yes, Jeff.
Yeah, so what's the definition of insanity? So you know, I'm not trying to undermine people with no experience in this realm. What we need is someone like Phil Deckard or a, a prior person who can administer our zoning ordinance and engage applicants at a basic level. So if it's five, 10 years of experience, that's all we need. The notion that we're going to get some senior level person in this teeny weensy town with no growth makes absolutely no sense to me. I can only say with 40 years or more and thousands of projects in my you know, experiential realm, just need someone who can help people apply, walk them through, help the deer be. A senior level person would be a terrible waste of further town funds. We just need someone who can support our community at a five to 10 years of experience level.
Okay, I hear you. All right, so that, like I said, it's an update. I will, the, the applicants, the last round of applicants was just a few days ago that it came in and I wrote back to Brennan and said, I don't see any of these worth pursuing. So I will wrap back around with him and push harder to try and get get us to somewhere that can move. And thank God for Kyle at this point. Ernie?
Can I just make a suggestion that, you know, Jeff touched on it. And, and it has, it's been a, a real problem for me. Why does a town of 3,700 people need somebody who is capable of providing, you know, higher level sort of advice to us, an, an urban, you know, someplace that really has a lot of problems with zoning and, and all the problems, all the issues, I should say, that is going here. I mean, this is not worthy of someone with a master's degree or any, anything that's going to cause, you know, I mean, the only reason we can't hire Kyle is because you know, he really likes doing it at the county level. I mean, I spoke to him, he's, you know, as I said, great if you did it, you know the town, da, da, da. He, except, but I just like doing the county stuff. So that's, you know, he's out, but somebody at Kyle's level is perfectly fine. We don't need a specialist. I mean, it's, we've already got a special, we, we've got specialists helping us with affordable housing and look at how many years and nothing has happened. Why would we need a specialist? I mean, I, I don't want to, I'm not arguing with Jeff. I mean, I think he knows what he's talking about and, and the qualifications he's setting up. I don't think, you know, when he says somebody at, at the, the lower end of experience, I think he's, he's correct also. You know, you know, I, I don't know why we're, we're, we're going down this. And we do this not just with, with this position, we do with every position in this town. And it's nonsense, but you know, this is the position that we have something to say about.
Yeah. So I will, I'll continue with that. I'm not, I will, I'll try to push and then, I mean, my, I do have, if I look at the list on the agenda and I look at the things we're trying to accomplish, I, I certainly would like to have somebody capable with enough hours to, to, you know, I'm not, I'm not putting anything on Kyle short of small little questions because he doesn't have the time. I would, I'd like to have somebody who we could lean on more to do some staff things, but I understand that does not need to be, you know, a very senior person who can really jump through hoops. So I'm, I hear what you're saying and I will continue to work with Brennan. Jeff?
Yeah, so I appreciate Kyle's filling in, but he, he does not have regulatory knowledge. We need someone with regulatory knowledge, whether it's five or 10 years. It doesn't have to be that complicated.
Yeah. Okay.
Does a position spec have the specific, I mean, is, is the position spec correct then? I haven't looked at it.
The current, so, no, I mean, the, the, the job description that was just posted to, with, that got four applications and, and just to be clear, the four applications were dismissable on paper grounds. I mean, they, they didn't, they did not have the experience any that related to this. They were going for any job in the region kind of thing. But as it stands now, the, the position that's being advertised is planning director slash zoning administrator and it's, it's for a relatively senior person. And so that's step one is to say, all right, we've done two rounds, three rounds of fishing under this job description. Let's, to, to Jeff's first point, let's change something before we try again. So that's, that's where it stands and, and I will, I'll do that and I'll get, and I will continue to update you. Let's, let's move on. On the, the last thing here, my, which I referred to as OML refresher. I just want to acknowledge and Mary smiling and we, we just I, we had a, an email that went out to too many people that had a little bit of policy detail in it. And that's, I just want to remind people and we want to be the example for the town boards and we'll talk about it and we get to subcommittees, for example. The town's business has to be done in more than meetings. That means any, any email that goes to any more than one person cannot have any comments, you know, it ha, it can't, you just don't do it. The town's business must be done only in more than meetings. The only exception to that is conversations around meeting times and maybe agendas. And even though should be one way. And the you know, you we need to be able to warn things and as soon as we start advocating and we need it in the packet, that's the other thing. If you say, hey, this looks interesting and you send it out to, to more, more people, if it's not in the packet, then the, the public can't see it. So I just, I want us to, to stay vigilant and really be an example. And that will go for the subcommittees as we talk about that. And that's important because if it's only one or two planning commission members on the subcommittee on a particular subcommittee, then it's, it's your responsibility to make sure that group, which may include new, newbies or other residents plays by the rules. Jeff?
Yeah, so Jan, I, I just want to understand. I acknowledge that fecal matter happens and in the context of the email dialogue that occurred, I think we need to acknowledge that we have a violation and the cure is what you've just said. It's important for us to acknowledge that, like Pam Smith tried with the select board. With a bit of difficulty to look, we're going to learn, we're going to grow. And right now I think we just need to acknowledge that there was an OML violation. What you've just said is acknowledging what you've said is the cure and we can move on.
Understood. Okay. All right, thank you. So the media item, we have a couple of media items and I want to time it. And so really the, the capital planning and then the subcommittees have several items under them, so I'm not expecting, I don't need us to get to permitting for a lot consolidation that will be a, a time permitting thing. So really I want to be able to put a little bit of time, a chunk of time into capital planning and then we'll get to the subcommittees. So capital planning. We, we talked about this and I think it's, it's, it's a really important new. It, it shouldn't be new. And it clearly is in the planning commission's domain. When it came up at the last select board meeting and Marcia says, well, that should be in the town plan. That's where it, that's where it lives. And there are clearly statutes that empower it to be in the town plan and to come out of the planning commission. And I spoke to Pam Smith when she was, was first made chair and she's wholly supportive of this and she would like to be the, at least one of, or a select board representative on some kind of a capital planning group. So just to kind of get the ball rolling, I would propose, I'd like to get us to where we can set up under the auspices of the planning commission, a capital planning subcommittee. And then if we could talk about, is that what we want to do? What the membership should be? How we want to, to organize it and move forward? So that's one thing I'd like to put on the table. I'd like us to make progress on setting up how to do it. And one of the challenges, I think, is that we have a couple of different time scales. Where, when I talked to Pam, she was very interested, very wanted to have the the capital planning process be able to feed useful guidance into this year's budget process. So we're talking, you know, this fall, a few months from now. We have, it's, it's called a, the statute says five-year capital planning window. We are not going to start from scratch essentially and create a very detailed five-year capital plan in three or four months. So we need to somehow parse that out a little bit, say, okay, here's what we can work on for a few months that helps guide step one of next year's coming budget while we're doing a bigger, longer term project. So that, just to put it on the table. Ernie?
Well, I, I'm, I'm kind of lost here. I'm not quite clear on what when, when you say, I know what a capital planning, I know what capital planning is, but how does the planning commission actually fit into doing capital planning? I mean, or just the, you know, capital planning for, like we do with the listers, you know, how much it costs to run the lister's office? Or, or is it something to, you know, that, that's throughout the towns? I don't, I don't understand what capital planning we would be involved in.
Well, I would take, Jeff, you can take a run at it. I mean, I would use the sidewalks as an example or, or anything else. The, the capital plan lays out all of the different infrastructure and cycles of, of when they get replaced and, and where, how that, you know, makes sense of all of those needs. But Jeff, you want to take a crack at it?
Yeah, the, the Vermont statutes annotated give us a clear role in the context of how we look at all of the infrastructure in the context of capital planning, master planning and, and our, and our collective needs. I think the key issue here is that we need to find a paradigm where we find staff and perhaps leadership that will engage us in a collegial fashion to actually address what the law requires of us. So in that context, maybe we disband the context of the multimodal you know, subcommittee and, because it could be a subset of the capital planning and throw all of the infrastructure into the capital planning context. But you know, you know, there are things like to, in addition, two rivers has a transportation advisory committee that, that looks at roads, bridges and other state funded facilities. And from my perspective, it's, it's critical that we actually have folks that have knowledge in this realm participating in something like the, the TACT, the Transportation Advisory Committee, as opposed to just, here's a staff member, yada, yada. So my personal experience for a lot of years in this realm is that this town hasn't really given any honest consideration to capital planning in the context of what, what the law requires.
And yeah, maybe if I just, I can touch on, on the statute background, just because it does have a pretty specific list. The planning commission may submit recommendations annually to the legislative body for a capital budget and program shall be in conformance with the municipal plan. Capital budget to be adopted, amended, repealed if a, and then it refers to a utility and facilities plan as described in dot, 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 and the utility and the facilities plan consisting of a map and statement of present and prospective community facilities and public utilities showing existing and proposed educational, recreational and other public sites, buildings and facilities, including water supply, sewage disposal, storm drainage. So you have a utilities and facilities plan, which then is rolled into a capital plan that says, oh, we need this for culverts, we need this for that's, that's at least what the statute describes that sort of tells you what it is. Ernie?
Yeah, could you mind citing what, what the site for that?
Those are, the, the first one is 1174430.
Wait, wait, wait. Title and, and.
Twenty, twenty, 24 VSA 117, section 4430 is capital budget and program. And the initial thing, it's, it's number six under 4325 Powers and Duties of a Pla, Planning Commission is prepare and present a recommended capital budget and program. And then if you drill into that, you get 24 VSA 1174430. And then the one that references utility and facilities plan is 4443. And the one that lists all the elements of the utility and facilities plan is 4382. So it's, it's pretty, it's pretty clear. And that's why I think, you know, when Marcia said, oh yeah, that if, if you talk capital planning, it's, it's part of the town plan and it's pretty clearly spelled out what it's supposed to have. And it's somewhat shocking that we've been budgeting for years without one.
So Jan, well, sorry.
Chris and then Jeff.
I'm just looking it up right now. So during the election period, we were, as being my policy wonk, the only thing I would give you a big heads up is that the town, whether any, I mean, Jeff, I'm sure remembers, Ernie might remember. The town did have a capital budget committee, but it went down really badly. I'm not quite sure why, but it did not do well. But I just, the only thing that I would be really I would encourage is to talk to the select board first. They have, so if you look at the master financial policy, they have the whole thing on, I forgot what, on what page. You can't look at the, don't look at the capital budget plan because that is an independent policy. They, they bundled it. And it's now under the financial, master financial. And it's now under the financial, master financial. And it's on page seventeen. So. The only thing I would see is that, once again, you're going to have a lot of people who are going to volunteer a ton of time. Unless you have the support of the select board. They're just, you know, they're going to ignore you. So I would just caution. Saying, make sure that before we just all, you know, you get people jumped in on this. Make sure that you have full support of the select board and, and get direction from them because. Again, the, the finance, the finance committee has had the same problem. If people have now just will not join the finance committee because. They put in hours and hours and hours of work for this town. And they gets to the select board and they ignore it. And we don't have, you know, Chris Katokey put a post out this morning. You know, was talking about how we have no say in Dresden. Because we don't have a finance committee, which we should. But it's because the select board ignores. Committees like this. So that's my only suggestion is.
Okay.
You should all look at the, you know, you might want to take a look at the policy and you might want to make sure. That this is really very much tied in with the select board and that they are going to support. Whatever initiatives come out.
Yeah. Yeah, understood. I think, and that's, so part of what we can talk about tonight and get to is. The, the next step may be of, of. Just a formal request to put it on the agenda with the select board. Or, you know, an, an affirmation that we want to work on this, but we want to make sure to do it. In a way that's supported. Jeff?
Yeah, or I don't really care what the select board thinks. And I don't mean that to be disparaging. The law is what it is. Even though our select board doesn't seem to care about the law from open meeting law to. You know, this. So the issue before us is the planning commission has shirked its duties in myriad ways. In recent years. And this is but one. We have not had planning commission members that give a crap about what the law says for. A number of years. And those of us who've been sitting on this planning commission who care about what the law says. Have been bullied by certain select board members. I'm not going to go further, but it's a bit horrifying what we've been subjected to. Those of us who care about the law. Sitting here today, I think it's important for the planning commission to say, hey, look, we want to. Do what the law says and embrace this capital planning paradigm. And if, if the staff is smart, and I'm not going to suggest, suggest that we're ever going to find smart staff. And I'm not going to suggest that our staff is not smart. They're going to work with us because we're going to do their work. And if the select board is smart, and I'm not going to suggest that paradigm might ever occur. They're also going to embrace this for the benefit of the town. So when I look at the capital planning needs that we face, and there are significant things like. How do we address Norwich Fire District needs from water to sidewalks? To this ludicrous paradigm on Beaver Meadow Road. And, and I, I feel terrible for Brennan as, you know, he's published this, this R F P for. Folks to spend thousands of dollars to design something that could all be put into putting gravel on the side, on, on the. On, on the gravel shoulder. That's how messed up our community is. Our public works department in the past would have simply put in the five-foot or four-foot gravel shoulder to have accommodated. What needs to be done instead of this, tens of thousands of dollars wasted because we got to make sure we. We kiss every, you know, you pick, you pick your anatomy. So at this juncture, the planning commission has a responsible, responsibility according to the law. To look at capital planning, it doesn't matter what the select word listens. Does it? And, and if I change gears, stand up for Norwich is an example of what happens when. The, you, you know, our overlords don't listen. And I'm trying to be nice and, you know. So at the end of the day, our community does care. How do we spend money reasonably? How do we plan reasonably?
Yeah. Any, I mean, I would, I would agree, but I would, I would echo. Chris's point in that, you know, and it's, and it is in the statute and we know it, that's what, anything to do with the plan. We are making, we are drafting the plan. Who then be submitted to the legislative body for discussion and, and approval. So we, we clearly. Cannot avoid the select board. So, and to Chris's point, if we are going to put in work ourselves. Or ask town, townspeople to, to join in that effort. It has to have a credible chance of, of success and, you know, usefulness. So I, I, I think we have to put, we have to keep both of those on the table. And I, I take what, what Jeff is saying to me. This, the planning commission clearly should lead this. The planning commission has the authority to lead it and has been remiss in not. Filling that number six responsibility on our list. It needs to be done in a way that's going to work, that's going to be useful to the town and feed into the select board. Pam at least is certainly supportive and wants to participate in that. So. If we. Take the idea to say, okay, let's. Start on this effort led by the planning commission. What are the first steps? Jeff, I like the idea of. I mean, because I don't want to proliferate, you know, fourteen subcommittees here. And multimodal is clearly. Capital intensive, if you will. So I think it makes sense to say that if, if we appropriately expand. The scope of that or incorporate it within. If we were to just put an idea on the table. Create a planning commission subcommittee for cap, for drafting a capital planning effort. What, what do people think of that specific idea?
I'd like to open up to sort of explore a little bit more what that would mean for. Creating this budget. Does this mean public works would? Have to, you know, because I mean, thinking about where many of these capital expenses would be. Does that create a, a structure within the town that the town employees and leaders of. The various capital intensive groups would. Present their proposal to us and then this group would be the group that would therefore prioritize. No culverts over sidewalks, over roads, over Tracy Hall, over heating systems. I'm just thinking about kind of, I mean, I've, I've led capital projects committees. And, you know, it largely is a kind of a place where you collect a lot of ideas. Yeah. I mean, you know, like you can do planning studies, et cetera, but in, in creating the budget itself. It's, it's a, it's priority setting, right? I mean, what's, what are the greatest priorities? And so. And so i- is that kind of, when you get to translate to the, the nuts and bolts of. The, what does this mean? Is that what we're talking about?
Jeff?
I, I, I think, Mary, the answer is yes, sort of. Because you, having lived here my entire life. What you're describing in terms of interaction with staff. About such things has never occurred. What has occurred is we've had town managers. Let's say hypothetically, and I could mention specific names, say. This is what we're going to do as opposed to engaging the community in accordance with the law. And, and engaging community support. And I can suggest the, the debacle of the public works facility from a former town manager's. Push, including liquidating the Norwich pool to accommodate his interest in that context. I know this is being recorded. I, I remain horrified by the conduct of, of the way we've had. Staff, town managers saying, this is what we're going to do. We don't give a crap about what the public thinks. So in reverse, to answer Mary's question, yeah. Hypothetically, in accordance with the law, the planning commission would say, yeah. What does the public want? What do we need? What are the priorities? And how can we engage and support staff? As opposed to being. You know, bullied and battered and beaten in the context of what our actual role is.
Yeah. And I think just to add to that, a second, Chris, I see. That it's, it is also one of the powers of the planning commission to. Request of other entities within town government, any information that is necessary for the planning commission to do its job. So it is perfectly appropriate under that. To say, oh, we have a, part of our job is to write a capital plan. So. Here are, here is the set of background information. So D B W, police side, you know. Give us a list of inventories and, and, and turnover times and so forth. That's, that whole bundle is, is within our scope. I, but I, it is a good point to say there's the inventory. Side of it. And then there is the, the, the policy prioritizing. Part of it, and those are distinct. It'll, you can do a lot of work in the, collect all the information. Across departments. That you want to put together into a capital plan. And then you're saying. Okay, you got a million bucks, you got this much to parse out. What comes first? Chris and then Ernie?
So I'm going to disagree with Jeff on one point that in fact the town did. And I know neighbor Jeff, Jim Gold was on it, was the mark, they created the Markon report. And if you look under reports, if you go to the town website. And you look under reports, the Markon's been sitting there for the last 10 years and they, a lot of people got together. And wrote up a very, I, I mean, I think the document is like forty pages. Of how the, what they felt, they were working with Andy at the time. On the issues around D P W. Now Andy was obviously. You know, working closely with Neil or I'm not quite sure, I think it was Neil was, I, I'm not quite sure if Neil was town manager at the time. Mark on was written. But it was an extensive report and I think it's still. A lot of the information that's in there is still valid. They were talking about, you know, what they wanted to buy for a, a road grader. And this is what we're talking about. You want to talk down to nuts and bolts. It's, you know, this capital plan is about, you know, how long. And, and this is where I think the collaboration with the Jeff, where you're absolutely wrong with not wanting to collaborate with the select board. Is, you know, are, are cruisers in the purview of a capital budget plan? And, and they, 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 they spend most of their time talking to the police about. The longevity of the cruiser. Should we rent them? You know, I, I've been at meetings where it just goes on forever. And it's not a part of a capital plan, but road graders are. And so if anybody wants to take a quick look at the Markon report, it, it should still be up. On there. But. Again, there were a lot of community members who were engaged in putting. A great deal of information into that. Now, how much the town applied in the budgeting process. To buying a new road grader and did they actually look at the Markon report and. And make a judgment on the purchase of that? I don't know. But I think that's what it's about. You're, you're, you're talking about, you know. Should the town buy road graders every seven years? I mean. And this, it's to Mary's point, you know, what exactly are we, what is the objective? What is the objective to try and look at budgets over time? Is it looking at? Infrastructure and the lifespan of our equipment, of our buildings? And if we don't collaborate with the town manager and the select board, I'm not sure what the point of the exercise would be.
Ernie and then Jay?
Yeah, I was going to say, I, I, I have, I completely. I think this is a really good use and since it's also required by law. Something we should be doing. And, and, and I'm listening to all the arguments and I'm, I'm strongly in favor of, of. Incorporating capital planning and, you know, what I'm going to call economic planning. Into, into our. The things we do. But I think one of the things. That we have, have a difficulty with is actually, I know I've never thought of the planning commission being a. Involved with, you know, economic or financial matters before. I don't have any problem, especially since you've cited. The, the law that, that, that it is our responsibility and I'm glad it is. And I think what that also points out. People should remember is that other than the select board. We are the only. Legislative body, the, the planning commission is the only legislative body, the other legislative body. In the town. And although. What we do has to be approved by the select board. That's no different than what's going on in the house, being approved by the senate. You know, it's a similar structure. And, and I think, you know, people are going to take, it's going to take time, a little bit of time. But we should, should emphasize that that is our job. And that way we'll be able to incorporate, you know, capital, capital planning. Probably more easily, it'll be easier to, it'll be an easier sell that what we say also matters about that.
Mm-hmm. Jay?
Yeah, this is a, a really interesting conversation and I come at it a little bit from the strategic perspective of. That it seems like lots of times, whether or not it's this board or the select board or whatnot, is dealing with the leaves. And taking the step back to look at the trees of the forest is really important. And it's sort of curious that over the last five minutes, there hasn't been a discussion about the town plan. And in my probably overly logical head, I go, there's a town plan which talks about the intent. And some of the things that you want at a very high level. And then you keep peeling the onion and working down into some of the details. And so I applaud the planning commission talking about being part of all of this because. I think that's one of the problems when you look at a lot of the issues on the plate of the town right now. And concerning growth or whether or not it's sidewalks or housing or a sewer. You know, when does a town contemplate some of those issues in a capital process to make, I'll say, some of the step. The, the, the step changes that might, the step functions that might happen in, in the growth. If there's not a, I'm, I'm making this up and I'm not advocating for it. But if there's a decision about a sewer which takes 10 years to implement, well, if you're not part of the capital planning to get the sewer in. You're never going to be able to talk about where the next house goes if you, or on what the acreage is. So. I think it's just, I, from the outside looking in. I sort of just wonder if you are starting with the town plan and what are the key initiatives coming out of the town plan? That then lead to the capital requirements that ultimately may get down to where Chris is talking about of how many cruisers do you need? But I think the, the planning commission has this ability to be a little bit more strategic. And a little bit more long-term looking versus some of the day-to-day decisions.
Thank you. Yes, and, and I do think that's the. You know, as, as it stands, the simplest way of putting it is the capital plan should be an element of the town plan. It should flow, should be meshed with the town plan and it should flow from. And be, here's what happens to get what we want. Here's part of it. And then that flows down from there. That's the way it should work and it's been a, it's been a gap. Jeff?
Yeah, I, I just want to note that perhaps it's my failure because what Chris represented relative to my view. Is exactly opposite of what my view is. My view is based on law, we have a responsibility and it would be delightful to collaborate with the select board and the staff. The fact is that we can't make the select board collaborate with us and the staff collaborate with us. So I just want to be clear, there's no context in which I don't want to collaborate with the select board. Or the staff.
Okay, good. I, I think, I mean, I, I hope. That, that we can. Be unified in that starting point. And I get, so then I would challenge the group or, or put it on the table to say, okay. We have two things. We seem to be agreeing, we want to. Reinvigorate a capital painting process as a piece of the town planning process we are responsible for. And we want to do it in a collaborative fashion with other elements of both town government, staff and residents. Okay, with those as our starting point, what, what are the next steps? What are the, what are the next two or three things we should do? As the planning.
Let's create a capital planning subcommittee that I think should subsume or, or take over for the multimodal transportation subcommittee.
Yep. And wait, let's, you want to just move that Jeff and we'll, we'll uh, use that to crystallize conversation a little bit? Okay, Bob has kindly agreed to take minutes, so that's why he's writing vigorously. Do I have a second for that motion to? All right.
Oh, was there a motion? I missed that.
Oh, I just asked Jeff to make an emotion. It was a simple enough statement. I should have asked him to restate it, but I think the, the motion is to, to uh,
I, I make a motion to create a capital planning subcommittee that uh, that, that absorbs, if you will, the multi-model transportation subcommittee.
Yeah. And uh, and then I think just to, well, and we have a second for that motion and I would just uh, put it in context because we'll talk about subcommittee rules in a minute. Um, but we already have uh, done this before and, and said that what happens is we, we have a topic that is, uh, makes sense to do in a subcommittee level. We create a subcommittee and then it's partly a pull your up, self up by your bootstraps point of view. We, we collect at least a core set of people who are then asked to draft their charter, their charge, bound, bound what they're going to do and come back to the planning commission and say, okay, we, the, the core of a capital planning commission, this is our planning subcommittee, this is what we want. So that's, that's how we've done it before and, and I don't see any reason, you know, we don't have to write, we're not going to write the charter for them. We can say this is something the planning commission wants to do, subcommittee seems like the right venue to do it. And then the next step would be to talk about membership.
Jan, I, I would suggest that we can let people go write their, the, the charge, but you know, this could be, you could really think about this being very strategic or very tactical. And so I just wonder whether, how do we try to keep this conversation? At least initially at the tactical level, because we know we have a lot of work to do on the town plan. And, yeah, I mean, at the strategic level, because we have a lot of work to do on the, the town plan. If someone took this off in a very tactical level, then that could uh, you know, drive a lot of, they, they could box this in in some interesting way. And so I don't know how to, how to do that and how to do it legally. And you know, Ernie, Jeff, others who have that more legal background might have some language to that, but um, but I'd hate to have it be too tactical a group.
So clarify, and I, I think I know what you're saying, but just so we all understand if, so tactical for me, uh, the example would be, all right, we would, we could spend a great deal of time on inventory details on, on like, okay, how many square feet of sidewalk do we have? And when, you know, and, and all of those details could uh, could swallow all the time. Uh, and strategic would be, you know, uh, what, what is it? Into the town plan, what is, what flows from that?
What's the town plan trying to accomplish? And what are the capital investments that are needed to achieve that? That's very different than, you know, so if the town plan says, you know, you know, I mean, so within the context of what is the town plan asking the town to be or wanting the town to be, what are the capital investments that we need to make to achieve that? Which is different in some ways than, you know, having us be a some committee that's going to look at the capital investment of Tracy Hall and how we're going to handle that, for example. Right? That's a big capital investment, but that's a, so as opposed to, you know, how, how do we define a walkable community? What does that mean? What is it? You know, the planning committee is going to talk about, you know, town spaces and town forests and what does that mean? And I've been thinking about it coming out of the planning. Maybe that's not what's intended by the law, but I worry that if we start getting into how many cruisers does the police department get this year? And what's the, you know, what is the annual, you know, some of the things Chris was talking about that we're going to get, like, that's, it's not what at, at least to me, that's not the coming out of the um, the goals, the mission of the planning commission.
Mm hmm. Jeff?
Yeah, I, to me, this uh, committee needs to stay strategic. So when I think about what Chris Kaufman has to deal with or what Brennan has to deal with, you know, they're coming into this community with little knowledge, frankly, and I'm not sure about backgrounds. But what are our broader infrastructure needs? And Jan, from the law, you read, it's drainage, it's stormwater, it's sidewalks, it's roads, it's water, it's sewer, et cetera. So, so there's this macro that could include public facilities that's part of our, our charge. And so whether we desire to drill into any one of these, that's not what this committee is going to do from my perspective. The committee could say to the select, to, to the planning commission, uh, hypothetically, once we've had this uh, collegial kumbaya meeting with staff and select work members about all of the items, hey, planning commission, this is what we think we need to focus on. And we could say to the planning commission, this is how we think the planning, the uh, town plan should address what we're thinking about.
Mm hmm. Okay, Ernie?
Well, I think, I think Mary's comments about thinking strategically uh, and so on, I, I think of that as sort of higher level, you know, um, broad-based kinds of policy um, thinking. And and I think, and I, and I think that is in our purview already. Um, I think we're, what we're doing here is adding um, some of the stuff that Mary suggested, I think. Thinking about, let's say, if we say decided we wanted to have some dense in development within the town somewhere. Um, and where, and no matter what happened, it was going to require uh, a sewage plant, uh, you know, sewage to um, system to be put in. All of a sudden, you know, we're starting to talk about money as well as just the, I, just sort of the planning of of where people are going to go and how they're going to build in those spots and all, and now it's going to infect the environment and all that sort of stuff. We're starting to talk about financial stuff there too. Uh, I think, I think the intermodal thing, um, that, you know, to me is clearly a, um, you know, going to in- involve um, financial aspects of it. And again, I think that's an appropriate place to be. I mean, you know, people have talked about police cars and all, all that sort of minutia. I think that I think that you can talk about the higher level stuff without having to worry about things that are, minutia is not the right word, but um, um, the sort of individual stuff, I think that gets to being what I think Mary refers to as tactical. Um, I'm, I hope, I don't think, I, am I wrong? You can shake your head up or down or you know?
No, that's right. It's sort of the transactional part of it. Like, look, you have to do these things, so just do them and don't need to just do them.
Mm hmm, mm hmm.
So again, that also goes to our purview as being, you know, really the, the primary, you know, detailed policymakers in the town too. Because we do a lot more detail than the sort of generalized stuff that the select board does.
Mm hmm. So it, it sounds like we have agreement uh, on that. You know, and I think the statement, what is the, what is the town plan trying to accomplish? And what are the capital plan elements that support it? Um, is a good way of, of thinking about the the strategic uh, aspects of it. So, so if we're, if we want to do that, and, and certainly when I spoke with, with Pam Smith, um, you know, she, she has an interest in the, in the finances and in the detailed finances and, and does want to drill into, because the, the select board needs, needs guidance on, on the next time a cruiser thing comes up. Uh, what do they, you know, they have some intelligence to put against it. Um, so what I'm, what I'm trying to picture is if we say planning commission subcommittee with this high level um, uh, charge from the planning commission, we figure out what kind of membership is appropriate to that and who's interested in it. Um, we may get, you know, we'll, we'll need, Brennan, we'll need staff, we'll need some collaboration with the select board, but clearly we're looking at a, a kind of a a big pie of activity. And it's not essential that this subcommittee does all of it. It, it's, it, it's valid, I think, to say that it's doing the planning, the strategic planning, the embedded in the town plan activity that then is, is going to, you know, it's perfectly valid for, for Brennan to request that the DPW gives a list of all the equipment and, you know, somebody compiling that entire inventory uh, does not need to be us, but we should have tendrils into it. We should have connection to it because we're doing the strategic part. Um, so I think if, if we can take the next step and say, all right, is this, um, are we at a point at where we would say we're making this committee, it has this high level uh, charge. Um, we are formally requesting a select board member. We are saying we would like to beat the bushes in town for people who'd like to be part of it. And where, where do we stand on kind of uh, pulling in other parties into this? Or do we want to keep it within the planning commission for X number of, of discussions? Jeff and then Chris?
Uh, yeah, yeah. And so there's a, a motion, a second on the table and there's been wonderful discussion. Uh, uh, so I don't think we need to decide in the context of who's going to be a, a member, who are we going to engage to address the motion on the table? Uh, nonetheless, I think what you've just asked is, is very important. So how do we, how do we organize uh, proceeding?
Well, let's, I mean, if, if people are right, we can just call the question uh, to, to create the body and then we can take a next level of detail about uh, membership or next steps. Does that sound all right to people? Let's, let's call the question. Um, all those in favor of the motion on the table? Aye or wave something I can see? All right. All right. So we've got that motion passes unanimously. Um, so then I would ask the group and we'll, and then we'll nip off this, this topic. So in the next few minutes, I would ask, okay, what, what do we want to do with this group? Uh, say before our next regular meeting? Um, I, I would certainly like to participate in it. I would like to continue my conversation with Pam Smith. Um, I think if, if we, if we can start the effort with the chair of the planning commission and the chair of the select board, at least uh, talking together about it, I think that's, that's helpful on collaboration. Um, so I would ask other people to chime in if they would like to participate. What do you think about uh, outside residents and any other select board engagement?
Chris has her hand up.
Oh, sorry. Yes, Chris and then Bob?
All right, right. Just happened to think that this is one of the committees that um, it really should be as inclusive with the community as possible.
Yep, okay. Bob?
Uh, yeah, sorry. Yeah, I was just going to say, I definitely like to participate and uh, and uh, I, I mean, it might be naive to say, but yeah, if we could encourage a, a select board member to be part of it as well as a few other community members. I mean, we don't want to get enormous and cumbersome uh, to, to move forward, but uh, but you know, naively enough, it seems like that would be a great uh, a great uh, in, great to incorporate that so that if the concern is that everything is just brushed aside when you already have a select board member investing their time and effort in, in the work being done, then hopefully there's some level of engagement there.
Mm hmm. Jeff?
Yeah, from uh, I, I'd like to see uh, uh, Vincent and me be absorbed uh, from our past standing with the multimodal transportation uh, subcommittee uh, in, into this uh, subcommittee. But, but I think that uh, it'd be nice to have a staff member, whomever that is, who are staff members as active participants. And I, I don't necessarily think we have to have a limit on the number of people in the community uh, like we had with the transportation committee on, that was a subset of the select board with Lucy Gibson at, at the helm for many, many years. So like uh, uh, like Chris said, uh, it'd be wonderful to have uh, some, some key members of the, of the community that are interested in this, this type of thing because uh, uh, what folks from Stand Up For Norwich did was provide tons of effort analysis and data that if I were a staff member, I would be uh, so grateful for their contribution.
Yep. Ernie?
Yeah, I was thinking also that maybe it'd be a good idea. I mean, for instance, I right now am not in, uh, don't, I, I've already got a, a good bit on my plate to begin with. But this is definitely something when I'm working on something that, when, when I, when there's something I'm working on that has an economic impact, um, I, I think it would be good to be then incorporated into, into the, into the uh, into the subcommittee. Um, so I think you should, it, it should, it should also have sort of a flexible uh, nature to it, allowing people to, to be in and out. Um, depending on what they're working on and, and because you really want to have all this stuff tied together. I mean, um, the decisions, decisions made in the subcommittee might affect other subcommittees and other subcommittees, of course, will interfere, it will certainly affect this one. So I think you know, and it, you know, but everyone should, everyone who's on a subcommittee should also be potentially a member of this, this committee, at least insofar as whatever it is the subcommittee is working on is, affects the issues that the subcommittee is working on. And I can, I can think of almost everything that the planning commission does will affect, will have financial effects on the town and therefore sooner or later it's all going to come back. You know, people are going to be coming back and rooting in through the, through the sub, this subcommittee.
Yeah. Yeah, I think keeping that, keeping the appropriate level of separation and, and focus is, is part of the challenge, but um, so as it stands now, I've got me, Bob, Jeff, Jeff, we can wait and pulse Vince if he, if he agrees with your uh, subsuming him in, but, but we have at least three or four uh, planning commission members. Can we uh, decide tonight to formally ask the select board for a representative into the subcommittee? People support that? Jeff, Ernie, yes, Jeff?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And I don't think that's the way it works. I, I think the way it should work is we've got our subcommittee. And ideally the select board, and by the way, I'm not trying to preach the select board. If, if I were on the select board, I'd say who's going to be the cons comm rep, who's going to be the DRB rep, who's going to be the PC rep? Who's going to be the subcommittee this, that and the other rep, you know, et cetera. So I, I would say with respect to the select board, uh, Yon is our chair, reach out to Pam and say, uh, you know, how do you guys want to be reps for all the different trails to what McCullough committees and we'd love to have you be a part of this. And, and also to reach out to Brennan to, to say, uh, hey Brennan, we'd love to have you and Chris be active participants uh, i- i- in this subcommittee.
Yeah, that was my next question was Brennan, and I think that's, that's clearly part of it. We, we want to, we want to be seen as helping them do their job. And that, that's part of the point. We are guiding over, you know, a strategic vision that helps people do the right things. So yeah, I'm, I'm perfectly fine with, with leaving. So if, if we put it in the minutes, uh, you know, a motion to create um, that at this point, we, we are not limiting membership, we are uh, publicizing it, the, the chair will make an effort to reach out to both town staff and the select board. Um, and then um, we can, uh, we're not limiting the size. We're talking about what will probably be a, a, a relatively large, you know, this won't have trouble making our five member minimum. Um, that, that, that to me is probably enough for tonight on capital plan. Chris?
So I have a question that's sort of, it's related and not related. Um, so we just came off the heels of a conversation about the fact that we don't have staff. And that basically the members of the planning commission are, are taking on any one of these things. Um, any one of the committees, we're on the solar study committee. Um, and now we're going to have a capital planning committee, which is, you know, pretty cumbersome task, which is great to take on. Um, and then we've also been talking And then we've also been talking, you know, we had a land use committee that seemed to kind of dissolve with unfortunately losing Stewart. And so I guess my question is, no matter what we do, we always end up having to be in front of the Select Board, no matter what. If we want to change zoning, if we want to make changes to the town plan, if you want to submit a capital plan to anybody, we will always end up in front of the Select Board. And I guess my question is, it seems that we sort of I get the idea of a capital plan. I think it's super important. But we spent several months this fall talking about making changes to some of the regulatory, you know, the language in the in our zoning regs, and we haven't gotten to that. We're kind of working on the solar citing. So I just, I I guess to me, I almost you know, do we bite off more than we can chew? Or do we get something done first? I guess I I guess the Select Board, what I'm saying is the Select Board and under Pam is trying to prioritize because you can get caught up in these, they've been having these discussions for the last couple of Select Board meetings that they're always fighting fires, but they're never focused on a specific thing. So I just I I I guess I would sort of wonder what our priorities now are before we add another layer of something. And if it's absolutely, you know, this town's been without a capital plan for 15 years. I don't even know if it has one, ever had one. So, you know, should, is there any reason why we're not circling back and making sure we were, you know, we were talking about cleaning up the language in zoning regs? I haven't heard a peep about that for months. So I guess I'm just curious, at one point, and 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 the only reason I bring this up is again, we are without staff. We were are without a supporting staff member who can do a lot of the legwork. And I just don't want to see a splinter and not have anything accomplished by the end of the year. We don't have any goal, we we never set any goals.
Yeah, I mean, it's a good point, and I want I, you know, I've been looking at the the sort of the turn of the year as as we get new members or we get the organizational meeting that's coming up. I do want to use that as an opportunity to to reduce this, you know, get so that we have specific goals that are achievable. Jeff, and then, you know, I think we do need to move on. We have some bulky bulky stuff coming up. Jeff?
Yeah, so statutorily, we have a job to do. And if we want to see what we're suggesting be adopted, it has to be through the Select Board, and that's that's what the law says. So I think to the extent we embrace the Select Board, which I would strongly advocate and have for my nearly 40 years in this role, 30 plus years in this role, that's wonderful. And I've watched Select Board members come and go. I I'm going to say I've I've found it other than perhaps someone who lives at the end of Turnpike Road with Ed Childs and 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 maybe a former principal in 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 Chris, I'm not sure we've ever had a Select Board member that has any knowledge about what we do. Rather, Select Board members typically get up, you know, elected, and then they're the smartest people on earth. So I hope we can break.
Yeah.
Can I just interrupt? I I mean, I this is my first meeting as a board, and I'm I'm kind of concerned about a lot of the negativity around other volunteers in town and just putting it there.
I'm I'm not being negative. I want to engage the Select Board.
All right, so.
It'd be nice if the Select Board would engage us, and ultimately, it's the Select Board that has the the prerogative to adopt or approve whatever we suggest. So it's it would be it would be in our best interest to collaborate with the Select Board. That's that's what I've been saying over and over.
No, I I agree, and that's and I was about to to turn us in that direction. So let's let's park that. I think we've done, Chris's point is well taken. And we need to to, and I will put it on the agenda for the next meeting to to have a a goal setting activity, which to your point is what, you know, you can go to the Select Board meeting tomorrow. That's right at the top of the agenda is goal setting for both the Select Board and the Town Manager. And we need to do the same and work with them. So I think we made good progress there. Thank you. I will, I will talk to both Brennan and Pam about how best to do this moving forward collaboratively. Okay? Okay, next thing is related subcommittees. Now, what I did, and you saw it in the packet, I I we had a conversation on subcommittees at the last meeting. Vince put some statements in the minutes which were valid, but I thought not did not have enough detail in them to really have flesh that we could say, oh, here's how subcommittees work for in the Planning Commission. And because I know it is a it is a hot button issue for at least one Select Board member. And just be specific, if people didn't hear the discussion around the Affordable Housing Subcommittee, the the Planning Grant Proposal, which was approved to be submitted by the Select Board in a four to one vote. The vote against was Marcia saying that the Affordable Housing Subcommittee was not a valid enough, she wanted to incorporate that committee, make it a commission and say it was coming from the Select Board because somehow they couldn't do a planning grant. So there there was just topics around subcommittees that I wanted to really state explicitly. So that is why I put the draft policy statement that's in your packet. And I I put it out there as a draft. I put it out there to really restate what we talked about at the last meeting. But to be very specific, that the Planning Commission feels empowered and will continue the practice of creating its own subcommittees and naming members and the fact that they are advisory groups that then come back to the Planning Commission with recommendations makes them not very scary, and we can move forward. So I would love to open it up for discussion on that draft and and see what people think. Jeff and then Chris?
Yeah, I have some minor typos that I can hand to Bob. But I I'd like to make a motion if need be, Yan, that we adopt this as as a policy for for subcommittees. And I want to note that I take enormous umbrage at being portrayed as negative after I've asked over and over and over and over again to collaborate with the Select Board. When I say that Select Board members do not have the knowledge of what we do, that is not a negative comment. We are, we have layboard members. So sitting here today, it is super critical for me that we engage in the context of what the law says, acknowledging that the Select Board has different responsibilities, that we are honest with one another about what our knowledge is. And that's what your subcommittee statement says, because I completely disagree with the notion that we can't appoint our own subcommittees. That said, I have no problem with the Select Board saying, hey, we want to take over the Affordable Housing Subcommittee. There's nothing wrong with that. They led the the Corridor Committee. They led the 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 Transportation Committee for years. So I have no problem if that's what the Select Board wants to do. In the meantime, that is totally separate from what what's on the table now.
Okay, so I have a motion on the table to adopt this draft. We can, if I can get a second, then we can discuss any any adjustments or changes people want to talk about. Is that a second, Mary? Okay, second, Mary? Okay. Let's, any discussion other than typos can can obviously be submitted to Bob and we can correct. Chris?
So I just want to make sure that I understand a lot of the discussions around this need to submit this letter is because the Select Board or because Marcia had the idea and she thought it was by statute that the Select Board got to appoint committee and subcommittee members, subcommittee members. I'm still I I know we talked about this before, and I'm not sure, has the Select Board actually taken a vote and put it on the table to say that they want to start appointing, or is this just from a conversation that they had? And I'm just wondering if this is even necessary. So my my question is, is this even necessary? Because my understanding, it was only Marcia who had brought that forward to say we want to start appointing subcommittee members, and I haven't heard any conclusions that the Select Board decided to take a vote on something of that nature.
Mm hmm. Right. So let me just say, from my point of view, this is a continuation of internal Planning Commission methods. We talked about this nine months ago or something and say, well, yes, we want to use subcommittees. We'd like them to do charters. How many members? Then we had the, geez, it'd be good to have five members so that you don't you can talk, you know, I can talk to Bob on the school playground without causing trouble, you know. So this is a continuation of us doing our internal work. Yes, that's what that's what drives me. Yes, when they put it, the Select Board put out a proposed handbook and wanted to start listing who was what where. It it makes it, I think, a little more useful to make sure we clearly state how the Planning Commission does business. But this, to me, is not just pure reactionary to something that's happened at Select Board. It's simply having something that clearly states how we do business.
Well, you caught, you're caught, basically codifying it as this, as anybody knows, Select Boards change, Planning Commission members change, and they may or may not look back at something like this because it seems that for years, the Planning Commission has always just gone ahead and done this. And just, I'm just wondering if it's sort of preemptive because we're concerned that the Select Board is going to put out a handbook that may or may not say we want to start putting people on subcommittees, which, you know, again, I I could wholly disagree with them, but I thought it was just Marcia's initiative, and I didn't know why why this was.
Right. To the to the second part of your question, and then I see you, Jeff. I do know, I agree with you. I have not seen the Select Board make a concrete vote to, you know, that that puts more weight behind just what Marcia's been saying. I I have not seen that. Jeff?
Yeah, my perception is that what Yan has done is a function, as he said, of our interaction as a planning commission over some months and a recognition that the Planning Commission for some years has not embraced the open meeting law, nor has it engaged subcommittees in accordance with the open meeting law. So regardless of what the Select Board decides to do, simply, this is a summary of what we've discussed as the Planning Commission about what we think the law allows us to do and how we'd like to reinstitute the the notion of subcommittees that this commission has actively engaged in prior to, you know, 2019 or 18, now that we've been reconstituted.
Any other discussion on that motion? All right, call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Passed unanimously. So that's that's how we operate with subcommittees. That'll go in the minutes. And I think we just, I mean, I I take it as like a reasonable self-evident. This is a perfectly good way to do business. I don't want to make a big deal out of it. But I think it's important, and if and if people want to question it, then we have something specific to point to. Okay? So actually, the the next committee one is is multimodal, and I think to Jeff's point and to the previous motion, we have consumed that, absorbed that within the Capital Planning Subcommittee. So Jeff, other than that statement, is there any, I know Vince is pulling together what is, you know, some almost inventory data on maps of sidewalks and and various things like that. That's just going more in the tactical realm, but anything else to say on that committee?
Yeah, just that the draft charter could be thrown into this new committee for expanded consideration.
Agreed. Okay. Then let's go to solar citing because I think we I want to be able to have time to address that. Just a couple of pieces of news. I assume people saw in the packet. But there are two things on previous cases. Now, I I want to be clear, these are cases that have come across our desk, and I'm making these statements as informational points about that. One is that Lamparides' preferred citing letter was rejected at the Two Rivers on a queechy level. It was it was granted at the Select Board level. It was granted by this group. Three independent parties that have to agree to that. Two Rivers citing what they said was regional considerations and specifically land clearing and vagueness around land clearing said no. They left the door open. I would read it as if the applicant came back with further details about the land clearing, that it it certainly wasn't a hard no, really. But so that is an update on Lamparri. I don't, I don't propose that that opens it up to us, but it's an it's an update. And then on Upper Loveland, the the new piece of information really was an extensive and it's part of the PUC process, an extensive document released by the Hearing Officer, a proposal for decision, which is what then goes to the PUC for the actual decision. And that goes through all of the history, but then recommends approving or giving a CPG to that project. So again, neither of these requires Planning Commission action as as those updates. And then, Chris, I guess I would just, with those updates, I would ask you as the as the lead of the subcommittee, is there anything you want to report or or put on the table relative to solar citing? And clearly, the minutes of the last solar citing committee gave some more background on these things.
Okay, so yeah, I I would, because I think it's really relevant to what I was trying to say earlier. And that is, what are the priorities of the planning commission? And it's clear that the town plan has to be updated. The regulations have been changed. And the refusal or the rejection of Lamparri's letter is case in point. And so we talked about our last meeting, we said we're going to come to our regular Planning Commission meeting, and we are going to talk to everybody about the three main things. And that was get rid of default in the town plan. We have to update state state reg, which is now in, you know, it will have to be notated in the solar citing section or the policy section and plus some of the wording, because again, this flows some of the conversation. We were talking about the capital plan. If you and it was a really, really good thing that that we had that discussion. The town plan, as far as the town is concerned, is aspirational. Nobody ever, the only thing that actually went, it made it go beyond aspirational were the policy statements. And I remember when the when the Select Board was actually creating the policy, I had a talk with, you know, Steve Flanders about it, and he goes, Chris, you know, it's the policy is the only thing that really matters. And again, I'm sure the Capital Planning Committee is going to be looking at the policies because that was the intent of the authors of the town plan is to say, okay, this is the whole idea, and then here are the policies that we want to implement. So I go back to the solar citing committee. And basically, if we're going to be using this, I I still am it was clear in our conversation that there is confusion as to whether this is an aspirational document. And yet, the PUC completely uses it as a means for a two, four, eight review. It's not aspirational. It's actually, they take it quite literally. So if they're going to continue to use the two, four, eight, the the town plan in a two, four, eight review, I believe it would be negligent for us not to get that before the Select Board soon to say that there has been regulatory changes and it needs to be done. And so while we're going to be going in front of And so while we're going to be going in front of the. Select board, it just seems to me that this is a good chance to get rid of the word default. And update the state regulations, and the third thing we wanted to do was. Oh. I forgot, what was our list, Jan, you wrote it. It was to, to remove the word default, to update the state reg, and then the third was. Something that we wanted to bring before.
Well, it, it has to be to your point, and that it is. Because of the way the two four eight process works, the town plan is the thing that matters, and if you can't establish. Clear community written, clear written community standards or land conservation measures, the kind of official witty things. If those don't reside independently within the plan, then you, you've got no legs. You, you just, uh, that's what has to be there, you cannot. The process does not allow you to reach over to zoning bylaws with any weight. And so the town plan has to stand alone and be clear enough. And that, that's really the, the third one, and it's, it's the meatiest one in a sense, uh, that, that has to be dealt with.
So my point is that here we are. I think we, the, the solar sighting committee made a commitment to come to this meeting and say, this is what we want to do. And so this is where I kind of say, let's do it. I'm not quite sure, I, again, this is where I fear that we don't have. The staff members to support. Writing up a proposal, or do we do it, but, um, and I know Jeff is probably going to say, well, yes. Going before the select board, we're, they're going to have to, to make changes to the town plan, there's a whole review process, but. If you want to talk about the responsibility of the planning commission is that we make sure that. We are up to date with state regs and currently we're not, so I guess my question is. At what point do we pull the trigger? Do we wait three years, or do we, you know, when do you do it? I guess is my question.
Uh huh. All right, I've got Jeff.
And they, again, that they, they, they rejected it. They rejected Lamparri's. Based on the fact, it's not a regional decision. We all should have known, although, I'm sorry, Lamparri's did come before us, before they changed the regs, but now. Because the state regs say no more than three acres. It should be incorporated into the town plan.
All right.
Yeah, so, so Jan.
Jeff and then Mary.
Yeah. Yeah, Jan, my, my presumption was that when we created this subcommittee. That, that the folks involved would dig in to say, this is how we suggest we change the town plan. Uh, and, and in that context, we don't need staff to, to circle things with a red pen and uh. You, you know, and, and say, this is what we want to do, whether it's a. You know, an, an MS Word document or something else, so what I think we should do imminently is. Uh, receive input from this subcommittee about. The uh, this particular, or, or the particular sections of our town plan. With, I don't care if it's a red pen circling stuff with suggested language. Good enough for me that we can, uh, we can embrace and forward to the select board to change our town plan to go through the public review process. My perception has been for months, this is where we would go, and there's no reason we can't do that immediately.
Uh huh. Mary?
So I, I found the conversation, I, I was stunned and delighted to see the T R O R C letter. You know, Jen, Jay and I came to the meeting when uh, the Lamparri case was discussed and really said this town plan is too amorphous. This is a ridge line, whether, you know, and, and it is a protected zone. Uh, you know, you've got the forest block, got a whole lot of things, um, but there would. And, and the conversation that we had with the uh, with the solar sighting committee was instructive to me more in the kind of. Lack of clarity that the group had, our group had around. What were actually the definitive things that we are assessing, how are we assessing these decisions? How do we decide whether we should have, you know, looking back at it, should this plan have been approved by this? Committee, or should we have noted, it's in a protected zone, it's in a forest block. We need more information, we've got a, we've got a. A very generalized drawing, we've seen what happens with that before, generalized drawing becomes a large drawing. A three acre clear cut becomes an eight point two acre clear cut, as was within. With the uh, upper Loveland, and all of a sudden, well, we've already approved it, so we're not going to go back. And so I would actually like to make a motion that we put this on the agenda for the next meeting, that we're going to review this decision for the approval. For the Lamparri process and to see whether or not we actually have enough information to feel confident that this project does. You know, kind of support the granting of the letter. Because I think that we, you know, as we're, if we're a group of learners, and I hope we are. That we are going to continue to learn more about citing, we're going to learn more about cite this, uh, about town plans. And we're going to learn more about how do we ensure that the town plan that we have will result in the town that we all want to live in. And right now, I think that we have a town plan that is uh, really circles around energy. And then everything else falls, you know, from that. So I think that that's. Could I just finish, please, and then I'll have you to.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to ask what you were saying.
Okay, go ahead, sorry.
You were just, you confused me that you said something about the approval of the Lamparri letter, so I'm a little confused what you're.
Well, this committee approved, this committee approved the Lamparri letter. And then.
Yeah, Mary can, Mary can finish, that what I have uh, in mind right now is there's a motion. On the table, we'll ask for a second and a minute, and, but Mary can finish first, which is to put an item on the agenda for the next meeting to. Uh, reopen.
Review the approval.
Review the approval of the.
Okay, okay.
So that's, we got a motion one other second, but Mary will finish and then we'll. Go for.
And then I would second like to just tie this back to the Upper Loveland Road conversation, where this committee has approved. A project which right now would not get, you know, not uh, because of the, the most recent uh, language would not permit a. Uh, the town to cut eight point two acres in order to put up. A uh, uh, the solar site on Upper Loveland Road. And it was surprising, given the, the lack of clarity around how we do the project, how to approve the project. Um, made me think about that one, and you know, we haven't, you know, the, it still has more steps to go with the PUC, we're still fighting it. But I think that this committee, and I would have to recuse myself from any discussion, any vote on it, but I would also suggest that. Um, that uh, we've learned a lot since then and. And that that is something that I would hope that this committee could uh, review, we will be inviting the PUC to walk the land. I don't know how many of you have walked the land, but I think that's instructive to see the steep slopes. To see the siding, to see the ridge line, and to say, is this really what the town plan wants?
Uh huh.
Hey, hey, Jan, it's a point of order, we've had a motion on the table.
Yeah, I need a, I need a motion on, do I have a second to the motion on the table?
Can you repeat the motion, please?
Bob?
Uh, the motion was to, oh, sorry. Um, add to next week, the, the next meeting's agenda, a review of the approval of the Lamparri letter.
Okay.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, moved in second, did any, Jay, is this discussion to this motion?
This is a, this is a board issue, Jan, at this juncture.
Okay. Um, all right, planning commission discussion on the motion on the table.
Yeah, so I, I don't have any problem necessarily talking about the Lamparri project, but. Uh, I don't think whatever, look, uh, I was the one member of this commission that didn't agree. With the staff or planning commission. Or the town plan with respect to the decision passed. I'm not going backward, what I'd like to do is go forward to say, as I said earlier. Uh, hopefully, our solar sighting committee can offer language that will facilitate changes to our town plan that we can offer to the select board. If there's something we can learn from the Lamparri project, uh, by all means, otherwise, uh, I'm not in favor of, of going backward.
Other comments on the motion?
I would just like to comment on that, that um. We do have more information, some new information, and. I remember going back and reading the old Rod Francis notes about the planning commission meeting when they approved the.
It's a point of order, this has nothing to do with a motion on the table for the Lamparri project.
I will, I will bring that back and make it relevant. Um.
It has nothing to do with the Lamparri project, whatever Rod Francis said, he was not here for Lamparri.
But if she wants to make it relevant, let's listen for a minute, please.
The conversation was about the fact that if there's additional information, it could come back and be reviewed again. We know that that's part of the process of the committee. And so that is why I think that it's relevant to consider whether or not additional information has been learned about this particular project. To um, al- allow the committee to uh, have another discussion of, of, of the, uh, of the decision.
Yeah, yeah, my problem is, I didn't agree with the decision the planning commission made, so what? What are we going to do going forward? And that means change the town plan.
So I, I agree with the, you know, there. There are things to be learned from. The Lamparri project, uh, and I, and I want to. Be explicit about that, what we, what we've learned and how we can incorporate it going forward. So I, I do think there's value there. Um. That is a different bent than uh, kind of a, a revisit of the decision or the. Um. Uh, the actual, uh, you know, I, I want to learn from it, I want to go forward, that's what Jeff, I think, is saying. Uh, I'm not sure I want to open up uh, a past decision. Uh, if, if really it's T R O C's statement that is the new information. Um, and we have. Clearly the same amorphous town plan to deal with, so I, I do agree that the priority is getting our tools in order. Uh, and to the degree we can learn from this project to help us do that, I'm all for it. Chris?
So I'm going to agree with Jeff, only to a point, and Mary, my God, my heart goes out to you guys and I get it. But I, I, I going back to the priorities right now of the planning commission as a whole, and. I kind of think that the whole point of the solar sighting committee is to vet through this kind of stuff, and I almost want to suggest. That I personally really appreciate going back through the decisions. Um, we can't necessarily historically go back to the decision of Upper Loveland because Rod Francis, you know, obviously had. Huge influence on it. Um, but I almost think that. I would prefer to try and get the energy of the committee right now to be focused. On making these changes. And I would, but from the solar sighting committee. I think talking about the, talking about Lamparri and Upper Loveland, I think would be. You know, we'd be remiss in not talking about it. So. I guess.
At the subcommittee level you're talking about?
At the subcommittee level now, only so that if you can bring forward some of the things that might be relevant. That. I'm just thinking that. I just like to try and keep the planning commission on track. Um, for a lot of other things, but not to, I'm not saying I'm dismissing this, I just think that. I really want to know, I, you know, in our last conversation. Um, so I, I go back to our conclusions from our last solar sighting committee. Was that we were going to bring forward the three things, and I do remember the third thing, it was to change the. The ridge line designation, I believe was the third thing. I, I'm sorry, I don't have the agenda, and I didn't put your, your notes down, but we had three things that we were going to come to this meeting with, and that was. Getting rid of the word, go, go before the select word, change the word default. Update the state reg. As far as the forest clearage, and then there was the third thing, which I.
Well, even, yeah, I, I under, I remember now, I mean, basically, the, the maps or the equivalent of the maps have to be in the town plan. They can't, they, you cannot reference this, the, another document, so definition of ridge line, forest blocks and so forth. Has to be. Incorporate, has to be in the plan itself. That, that was, that was what we were saying.
And I just, I personally want to know, and I'm not sure, I'm sorry if there's a motion on the table or not, because I don't want to go off conversation, but. I just want to know what it's going to take for us, the, our group right now, to get before the select board to make those changes. And in the meantime, Mary, I totally agree, and I think that we should review. Um, the, the history. In, but I, I do think that it was in the solar sighting committee might be. At least at first, a little bit more um, helpful.
Yeah, all right, Jeff, Jeff, and then I'm going to call the question unless he does.
Yeah, well, no, uh, I'm not, not, uh, I'm not going to usurp that role, but uh. Uh, as the, including Ernie, I was the only planning commission member to oppose the decision for Upper Loveland. I have been on that site uh, at least three hundred times, maybe over five hundred times. There was no planning commission member that, that said they'd been on that site. Uh, that said, I know that site exceedingly well, that said, to the extent that the solar sighting. Subcommittee can learn from the past transgressions of our staff. And our planning commission and our select board, and help us craft language to go forward in a more appropriate manner. That's where I think we need to focus, which is what I just heard Chris say.
Yeah.
Uh huh, agreed. All right, I'm going to call a question on that motion, uh, and. Ask, so Mary, how do you vote? All right. Uh, Ernie?
Aye.
Chris?
So I mean, our, it's the, our, our motion is to have.
The motion is to bring it, to have it on the agenda of the planning commission at the next regular meeting.
Oh, shoot. We don't want to amend the, can we amend it? Mary.
Uh, we can, we can ask for an amendment to the motion if we want, uh, that says. Uh, the, the planning commission. Would like it to be taken up at the subcommittee level first, it would have to, Mary, when Mary and Ernie would have to agree to that amendment. Or we call, recall the question on the table.
It's already been called, Jan, unless, uh.
All right, so Chris, how do you vote?
Yes.
All right, Jeff?
Nay.
Nay, that was a nay, okay, Bob?
Uh, nay. No.
All right, I'm, I am going to vote no. Uh, I would like to, to see this done, I think, at the subcommittee level. Uh, that's a tie, which is uh, a no under Robert's rules of order, as far as I know, but I would. Totally support Chris's point, and I think Mary's intent, which is to. Get some learning out of this, to understand what's going on and to move us forward as quickly as possible. To something that is actually much more useful to the, to the whole group. Okay?
All right, so, I, so, so now as the, as the. Meta, as the, whatever I, I'm, of the, what am I?
You're the lead, you are the lead.
I didn't call the chair. Where I was finishing.
But, but the.
So, so the, the non-chair report continuation is that we wanted to come before this meeting tonight. And ask everybody if they were ready, you know, what kind of information? Uh, um. Yeah, do you, and, and ask them, what do you guys want? You just said you want us to redline the policy statement in the town plan. Or what do you guys want from us and how descriptive or, you know, I guess, isn't that what we wanted to do?
Yeah, so maybe I can, I can help and then we can, because I think it's, it's, the, the minutes are pretty clear about the, the details of the conversation. Um, we have uh, a guest coming to the, to the meeting of the solar sighting committee. Uh, a week from tonight, or, yeah, a week from tonight, and that is to, to. Talk about that specific question, how do you put? Uh. Clear written community standards into a town plan, what are the options, how is it done, how have other towns done it? And so on, so that is on our agenda, front and center a week from now. And so what I'm hearing Jeff say, and what, what Chris is saying is. We, the subcommittee, need to do that work. As quickly as possible and come back to this group, so as I would just, I would open it up if there are any. Uh, concerns from the planning commission to those things that Chris described. Get rid of default, make sure that, you know, and the broadest one, which is get clear written community standards such as. Ridge line definition, forest block def, in the plan. That that's what we are asking our. That that's what we are asking our subcommittee to do, and we're giving them a sense of urgency about it. So if if the planning commission agrees with that, then I think the subcommittee can take it from there and do the work.
Oh.
Jeff?
Yeah, so Jan, I think the subcommittee. Should proceed in whatever manner it thinks is appropriate to address what the current law requires. And I want to state for the record, because I've disagreed with our past, past staff and our past, past planning commissioner, past select board. That I am not being negative, even though I'm supporting what this proposal is before us.
Okay. So I'm gonna um. I'm gonna say that we have that at the subcommittee level, front and center. Um, I think we'll have a good conversation next week, and that's the point. We know. What we, what, we know our marching orders, so let's, let's get some traction and and do it. Uh, Chris, and then, and then we'll go to Jay.
I'm not sure if this is appropriate or not. I'm, I'm actually hoping that Mary is gonna join the solar siding committee, which I'm not sure. How do you do it?
No, I I have that on the, on the list, we have a, and I was gonna just touch on that at the end, we. Mary has made an official request to be a member of the solar siding subcommittee, so.
Do we make that motion? Can I make that motion now, Jan, because we're running out of time?
Yes.
I make a motion to to have Mary uh, be a part of our solar siding segment.
Okay. Seconds, alright. I just got three seconds and Mary, Mary's recruit herself for the second, so I think uh, I'm gonna count that as unanimous. Okay, so that, so we have that, we have our marching orders, I think that subcommittee can. Flourish and get some work done, and if we incorporated multimodal into capital planning, then to Chris's point, let's focus. We've got a couple big things on our plates, let's work them. Uh, Jay, and then quickly, please, I want to, I want to wrap around two minutes and be able to move.
I'll try to be quick, um, I applaud the efforts to create clear guidelines for solar siding, so Chris, thank you for chairing that subcommittee, thank you for moving along. I think as important as this came up in the capital planning and other places here. Um, clarifying the intent of the town plan. And what it's trying to protect, whether or not that's ridge lines, development, waterways, village area, et cetera. And are they the areas described like a ridge line, or is it areas within the designated areas? Like ridge lines that you can't see, or ridge lines X Y Z, back to your mapping point, Jan, I think is really important. Yet it's really clear that we don't have either, a clear town plan nor clear guidelines. And I think it's important, you know, Jeff talked about following the law. And I think there was an interpretation and there is an interpretation that the town plan is the intent of the town. And it's interesting over the last several years, whether or not it was. Upper Loveland, Lampiri, whatever the site is, that it's sort of trying to find the nuances, nuances of it, does this? Is this applicable to the town plan or not? And so clarifying that is so important. And I think it might be prudent to establish the standards prior to approving something. And I think it might be prudent for the committee to be able to visit sites and see it from both perspectives, whether or not it's people that want the site or. People that don't want the site. Because I think what makes a forest block or ridge line or a steep slope. More or less inviting to invite, uh, to development is important to 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 see. Um, but I think we should have the courage that the default. Should be no if things are ambiguous, as opposed to the default being yes. And I think when decisions have yet to still be made, meaning. We all are are very aware that the Upper Loveland, for instance, has been at the P U C for a long, long, long time. That means the door is still open. And several people in this group have talked about following the law, and if your interpretation of the law. Is different than the committee that stood before it, that I don't think there's any reason. Why you shouldn't be allowed to go look at that and reconsider that. So all I'm saying is, come to the site, look at the site, compare it against your criteria, whether or not you're rethinking a decision or looking at. Why a decision was made and then was rejected by someone else. It's all not over until it's over, and the last thing we all want is folks down the road to be looking and saying, wow. We could have weighed in before something was done and we didn't. So I think what I'm just trying to compel you to do is to look at it. And think about it, and with your best knowledge of where you're at and looking at the solar site committee and other things like that of of just. Make the decision based on what you see. Um, but not making decision is also a big risk.
Alright, thank you, Jay.
I could ask him a clarification?
Yeah.
And this actually goes back to Mary, I think. Mary, were you asking us to review the preferred site letter or just look at the historically? I, I'm, maybe I can, I was confused by your motion.
My motion was to look at the, is to go back and and review the decision to grant the um, approval. Of the preferred site letter for the Lamperty project.
Okay, because I, I think you misunderstood, I thought you were just talking about it from an experience, sort of historically. Where things went wrong, you're actually, your suggestion was to go back and.
Discuss it, discuss it, maybe, maybe overturn it, maybe say, you know what? Maybe we learned something and this is, but that's what, that's what the.
That, that motion, that motion.
It's, it's gone, it's gone, yeah.
No, 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 I just.
Okay.
Jan, can I make a, a, a motion to approve the minutes, the two minutes or the minutes that?
Yeah, we're, we're officially jumping over lot consolidation, but I'm pretty sure that between the, with with Jeff, we don't have anything to. Bring up to that, and the two of us were the ones with that on our table, so.
Let's put it on a future agenda, but right now we have uh, three twelve twenty-four minutes. Make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second to that? Any other, any comments, changes uh, on the twelfth? Alright, all those in favor of March twelve minutes approval? Chris?
I'll abstain, I was not here, so I'll abstain, thank you.
Yeah. Ernie, did I see a wave?
I I have to abstain, I wasn't there.
Okay. Alright, so we've got four, oh, we've got three, but it's everybody that was there, alright. Um, can I have a motion on the nineteenth?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments on the nineteenth? Alright, call the question, all those approving minutes of the nineteen? Alright, thank you, and thank you, Bob, for uh, doing the minutes. Um, and. I would entertain a motion to adjourn, just Mary, for your information, if we didn't give you the handbook. Uh, we all turn into pumpkins at eight thirty, we decided.
I love it. Thank you.
Ernie?
Uh, just a quick question, is this lot in consolidation or per, uh? Is that got to do with the, the thing about that, that is the stuff that's going on in the Lister's office?
It is, that the, that a merger needs a permit? Yes.
Well, yeah, okay.
And so we're, it it's on, it's, Jeff and I volunteered to try and get some language around it, we, but we have not progressed that.
Can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
There's, there's a statute, a very clear statute that defines. That and it it clearly says, if there is a road, you can't merge it, it's, it automatically causes a subdivision.
Okay, that may not, that may not be the specific one we're talking about it, but I hear you and please send me a note. Uh, and and we can incorporate that, alright, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I think you already moved it.
I think I did, alright, all those in favor of adjourning, thank you, good night.
Good night.
We'll see you, thanks, Bob. So if you don't get those to Pam by Thursday, Bob, then Miranda can post them on Friday.
Okay, very good.
Good, thank you.